Okay, I'd like to open our town council work session this evening for Monday, April the 6th, 2020. First item tonight is number one, the Williamsburg Estate drainage issue. Turn that over to you, Matt.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council and the public. Uh, I have with me, uh, Mr. Roger Keys, who's the president of the Williamsburg Estate, as well as Mr. Foster, who's the treasurer for the, uh, the homeowners association. Uh, you have in your packet, a letter that they sent to me and my response. This has been at, an issue for several years as it relates to, uh, uh, water drainage. Uh, you have a, I'm gonna show you two quick videos. They were in your, uh, in your account, but I thought I'd go ahead and show them to, show momentarily. There's one video. As you can see, the water issues as it relates to this ditch. Okay. Let me get to the other video here.
This is the point of reference where all that water was. There is a sewer line back there.
Yeah, Mr. Keys wanted you to know that where that water was previously, there's also a sewer line there. So let me show you the second video that he post, gave us.
That's where the sewer line is, and it has backed up into the home.
Sanitary or storm?
Sanitary.
Uh, he said, did you hear that, Chris? He says sanitary.
Yes, thanks.
Uh, and then I'll show you some pictures. Actually, I already had them. Had them up already. This will help you. So, Mr. Keys, Mr. Foster had some pictures they wanted to show us.
That's, uh, that's the discharge from the end of the lake that goes.
This is a discharge from the end of the lake?
It actually winds up into Happy Creek. And that's.
That's going in, that's coming off of Lyd, coming across from Linden.
Coming across Linden?
Now, that right there, I talked to y'all guys, or I came down and talked to the town last year, that sewer drainage pipe right there, where the water comes out of the lake, it has, it overflows and it's caused a big old rift right there. And y'all guys were supposed to cover, come fill that back in this year, and that didn't happen over the fall.
Okay, I mean, do you want me to continue showing these pictures, Mr. Mayor? Do you have an idea? Okay, so the, the, the issue is, um, as Mr. Keys, um, and Mr. Foster and the homeowners association, their position is that the, um, Town of Front Royal has a responsibility for the drainage ditch. Um, I have been up, I've did a site visit myself, uh, did a site visit with a couple council members as well. Um, and true, it is true that I believe storm water, water from the roads do get into this, uh, this ditch, but the greatest issue as I see it is the, the stream itself, or the creek itself that runs, I mean, when it, when, um, when it rains, I mean, tremendous amount of water comes from, from the mountain down that, down that creek.
Comes out that pipe.
Yeah.
Off of Linden. So when all that filters through, this path right here that goes to the lake is not, it goes from a couple of inches like you see right there. So we have right now, if you go up there, there's, there's water sitting in there.
Right.
Which is a mosquito nest and, and everything else because it, it's an uneven flow.
Uh, if I may, I moved here in 1991. There's a little footbridge across that ditch.
Yeah, it's right here.
The water at that time, that ditch was about four feet deep. You had a couple of feet, you can see fish swimming back and forth. So over the last thirty years, it has silted up to the point that it's now like four or five inches deep. And when you consider the volume of water that comes through there, it can't handle it, and it just goes sideways, and that's where these people get flooded out.
Can you go back a few, sir? To where those, that, those pipes were? Go forward, um, I think.
Backward.
Here? Hmm, yeah, right. No, it, no, I didn't know we're too far. Go back, go the other way, please. Enough, keep going. So that right there, you see, go back one? Nope. You see that, this right here? This one?
Right, the top, they're, he's referencing the top one.
Right, so that's the drain pipe right there that doesn't even flow anymore. So water, it, it doesn't even, I don't even know what that is, but our property line is up here. This drainage is on the inside, but this, this is so clogged up that water, I don't know where this is draining from, but this pipe runs this way, and water doesn't, it just kind of, it just sets in there.
Yeah, so.
And there's a couple of those.
That pipe actually goes under Walker, and it's so clogged with dirt and silt that I don't think it's put any water out in, I don't know how long.
Well, I think the question, the underlying question, as I understand it, Mr. Napier, you might be able to help from a legal perspective, but the underlying question is, um, where does the responsibility for the town come in? And what is the responsibility of the homeowners association? That was the advice I was given and why I wrote the letter.
Yeah.
To you originally, that, um, it's a private property, and, uh, we have no easement, um, on the property.
Well, good, keep, take your water and put it somewhere else.
Right.
Yeah, there's two big pipes on Linden.
Yeah.
But, I mean, with all due respect, the, the lady on Linden, when we talked to them houses on Linden, I'm sure this is before y'all's time, she's been, she has complained even when the sewers backed up into their basement because of that. She said that, no offense to, to the, to the council, of course, because it may have been before y'all's time, she got a runaround to the point that she just gave up.
Yeah.
So then that water comes out of those two pipes, and with that, with that flow, it, it just doesn't work.
Okay, so, um.
There are four pipes that the town installed that dumps water in there. Two of them are clogged up and nothing comes out of them.
Mr. Boyer, are you on the line?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Uh, are you familiar with the most, what Mr. Keys is speaking of as far as the four pipes and two of them clogged?
No, the two, they're, they come down and dump into those two big ones right there, but that day, he was out there and walked up, I mean, they had some grit and gravel on the bottom, but they wasn't clogged up.
Okay, well, are those.
Camera up and check them.
These?
No, these are, these are on the dumpster. That's the ones that are Linden, right there. That's Linden.
Right.
They come across to the two big ones on the other side of Linden, that dumps all that water onto our property.
Yeah. So the, the, the underlying question that we need to determine, uh, members of council is, um, what responsibility does the Town of Front Royal have in this area? It's, it isn't, it is, it's clearly a problem, and we, I've, you visibly can see where they've had an excessive amount of water and the damage, the, the, not damage, but what has caused in that area. Um, uh, what was it, last year, last year, Mr. Boyer did an estimate, um, in, to, uh, put riprap, thought it'd cost around eight, eight thousand dollars. Uh, but the question of it is, 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 um, how, how does council want to proceed? And if council had any questions for Mr. Boyer, Mr. Napier, myself, or Mr. Keys and Mr. Foster?
No.
Hey, Matt.
I understand.
Yes, sir.
Who maintains those roads through there? Does the town, or does the HOA, uh, hire a contractor to, like, for snow removal, road repairs? Who does that?
Yeah, that's, town, town roads.
Okay, so, it's an HOA, so what are they exactly paying for?
Well, we paid twenty-eight hundred dollars for a pipe to help drain our lake that's eroding the property, our property on that, that we paid for that.
But I mean, do you have a.
Control the water flow.
You have a, like, a monthly fee or a yearly fee that you have to, to pay to this HOA? And, and then what, what does that HOA, what are they supposed to do for you?
Well, the HOA, the only thing the HOA owns is that five and a half acres of land there with the pond on it. And the dues that we collect go for insurance and, uh, mowing and maintenance of the property to keep it, uh, over the last year, we've spent a lot of money getting dead trees down, clearing the land, and trying to make it look presentable so people could use it as a place to go up and picnic or whatever. Um, and that's, that's what we do. The biggest issue is the wa, you know, that, I'm sure that what we call a ditch was a, is a creek from lord knows how long ago. And whenever that farmer put that pond in there for his cattle, I'm sure the creek was what he used to fill it and tip it to keep it full. And I don't think there were any houses, well, I know there weren't any houses in Williamsburg Estates, and probably very few between the pond and John Marshall Highway. But since all these houses have been built all through there, uh, the town put in storm sewers and the, the creek was a convenient place to dump it. And that's fine, I, I don't mind you dumping your water into our lake, however, the silting that's going on has rendered the whole thing almost, you know, it's like, it's like pouring water through a little funnel, like dumping a five gallon bucket through a small funnel trying to get it out, it just goes everywhere.
Well, with those two videos that we showed, you, you would, you will agree, those videos, the, the amount of water that were indicated in those videos did not come a hundred percent from the street roads. You know, it came from the mountain, and all that water is coming down through that, that creek, and that's what's causing a massive amount. I mean, I was up there in a heavy rain for two weeks, and water was still flowing through that, that creek.
Right, but if it's dug out, that's gonna stop the flooding on the street, it's gonna stop the flooding at the houses, it's gonna stop eroding the ground.
Okay, I mean, I, I understand. Any other questions from council?
Matt, can you hear me?
Yes, and I, I can now.
Oh, okay, I was sure, I, it wouldn't come on a few minutes ago. Uh, you know, in regards to that subdivision, I was public works director when that was built, and we had, we had a little problem with, uh, most of the water that comes down through there comes off of the national, well, where the zoo is at this point. And when Mr. Marlowe built his subdivision, we had the same issues there. We annexed that in nineteen seventy-seven, uh, from the, from the county, uh, we did, as a matter of fact, my crews installed most of those pipes in there, and, uh, it's been an issue for a long, long time, but we inherited the problem back in, like I said, nineteen seventy-seven, I believe that's when we annexed that particular portion. And, uh, we, we've installed some of the bigger pipes trying to alleviate the problem. But as far as that pond, that pond's been there a long time, when Chris Ramsey built that development, he made that pond about, I'd say, quite a bit bigger than it is this time. And that was according to, if you go back, I don't know if we, we got records, but according to the actual plans and all of that, uh, that whole lake and that area that was on the property is to be maintained by the HOA, maintained by the HOA. Uh, since that time, I'm not sure exactly what transpired, but, but I do know at the time that that development was done, uh, it was suppo, all of that was supposed to be done through the HOA. Uh, that's my understanding, because I was there when, when we built that subdivision.
Well, sir, we are, we are maintaining the, the pond and the area around it. The problem is the storm runoff water that's coming in there has filled that lake up to where it can't hold anywhere near as much water as it used to. And so when we get a big rain, it's going sideways. Uh, there's houses on Linden Street that are, I mentioned the sewer backup, uh, the house on the corner of Walker and Linden, uh, as I put in my letter, had, got flooded numerous times, they, it cost them thirteen thousand dollars. They now have to have flood insurance at nine hundred eighty dollars a year. Uh, where that creek comes out to Walker from up the hill, the two houses between that, it is eroding their backyard, they're, I mean, it's tumbling in. And, uh, as the HOA, there's nothing we can do. I mean, it's, what it needs to have initially is A, get your drain lines cleaned out, B, clean out that ditch and make it deeper, or deep enough to hold it. And that, that'll go a long way to alleviate the problem. Uh, I mean, I, the only thing I can think of is, as far as cost goes, is you already have somebody working the machine, you already own it, so how much fuel is it gonna use in a day to clean out that ditch? There's no, uh, immediate need to have a bunch of stuff dumped in there, riprap. It'd be nice, but, you know, if, I know, I know dollars are tight right now with all that's going on, but I think you owe that to the public that lives around there.
Uh, Doug, are you there?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Uh, I think Matt asked you a while ago, uh, who was responsible? You never did respond, at least I didn't hear.
No, I really didn't get a chance to.
I can't hardly hear you, Doug.
Oh, okay, let me, oh, slip up here. Um, it, it really is a fact-driven issue. Um, it's, um, and I'm, I'm not evading the question, I'm, I'm just, uh, giving you the law on it. It's a fact-driven issue. Um, it's, uh, who contributes, uh, to the drainage problem? Um, if the town is the, uh, primary contributor to the drainage problem, then the town has some liability. If the town is not a, uh, primary contributor to the drainage problem, the town does not. I've been up there and looked at it, but I have not been there in a flood situation, uh, so I, I can't speak to a flood. Um, but if, uh, the, the primary, um, driver of the situation is, as these gentlemen from the HOA describe it, the town would have some, um, uh, some responsibility, not the primary responsibility, but some responsibility. If, on the other hand, um, the, uh, primary driver of these, uh, drainage and flood issues on, is, uh, because of, uh, drainage, uh, issues coming off the mountain, um, then, uh, the town does not have liability. In my own neighborhood, uh, we've got a somewhat similar problem. We don't have a pond, but, um, there's a couple of houses in my neighborhood, uh, that are, uh, downhill of a, uh, big ravine that flows off the national park, and they're across the street from me, but I feel sorry, uh, one, for the people, one of the houses got its basement blown out, uh, by a, a flood. Um, so, um, uh, you know, I'll be happy to go up there, uh, the next big rain we go, uh, go up there, but I, we haven't had a sufficient rain since I've been made aware of this problem to, um, actually see it in a flood situation. I don't know if Mr. Boyer's been up there in a flood situation or not, but, uh, if we wanna, um, hold off action, I'll go up there, um, uh, is, when we have a flood event, a rain, big rain event with Mr. Boyer, and I'll go up there and look on the ground. But, um, I did go up there with Mr. Boyer and Mr. Sonnet, I guess it was about a month ago, uh, Mr. Boyer, you and I and, uh, Mr. Sonnet went up there, uh, but, uh, it wasn't raining hard enough, uh, when we went up there, it was raining a little bit, but it wasn't raining hard enough to, for us to see a, a flood, and we haven't had one since. But, yeah, that's, that's the law.
Yeah, the biggest question that I have is, in fact, whatever we do in there, if we do anything at all, does that give us, make us responsible for, for it from that point forward? Or, uh, uh, or does it just eliminate the issue at this time, and then it comes up again? Then where do we stand at? Since we go in there and do anything, are now are we responsible for the remainder of the whole issue here?
Now, we, we could, uh, if, if we do a, a one-off, we, we can, uh, draft paperwork to make sure that's, that's a one-off. Um, um.
Like doing it in a memorandum of understanding with the HOA?
Yes, sir. Uh, however, if, uh, if the facts on the ground are such that, uh, the town, uh, does have continuing liability from a factual standpoint, um, you know, it could be a, a reoccurring, uh, issue for the town, uh, but again, it depends on the facts. If the, if, uh, uh, the drainage, um, uh, that the town is contributing to is a continuing problem, um, it may be next year or the year after, whenever, you know, we may be, um, facing this issue again, um, that, that's just, uh, those are just the facts on the ground, we'll just have to face facts. But, yeah, we, we can do a memorandum of understanding, um, uh, as to what's occurred because each time is a separate factual event.
Mr. Napier?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I've been downstream from that lake, and I've seen the same thing below as above. And when we have the mountain rains, I've seen it on, uh, John Marshall, and I've seen it in this area as well. Uh, what I'm hearing is, and what troubles me a little bit, is the liability for a creek bed now. Because what I hear the gentleman say is that it's runoff from the roads, but the, the liability, as you said, comes from the mountain, and it affects more than just their area. I'm seeing it downstream. How much liability does the town have for a, a creek bed?
Well, we don't have liability for the creek bed per se, but we have, what, what the, where the liability lies is where the town diverts the natural flow of water. That's where the town's liability lies. Um, uh, nobody, town or anybody else is never liable, uh, for the natural flow of water. That, that's, that's God's work. Um, where anybody becomes liable is when you artificially divert the flow of water onto somebody else's property. Um, and that's where you can become liable. Uh, so, um, that's what happens. If the town is, uh, diverting, let's say the flow of water is supposed to flow across, uh, uh, person A, B, and C, and the town, uh, because of its roads or pipes or whatever, instead of letting the water flow across A, B, and C, diverts it onto, uh, D, E, and F, then the town can potentially have liability to D, E, and F. If the town's, uh, improvements, uh, continue to keep the water flowing across A, B, and C, the town has no liability.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Um, I just, if I could speak for a moment.
Sure.
So I've lived on Linden Street now for twenty-four years. Um, I have certainly, um, the pictures that you sh, have shown and that Mr. Keys has brought to, to share, definitely not, um, they are not new to me, I've, I've seen it, um, I've seen it firsthand. Many years ago, um, before we had curb and gutter on our street, there was significant flooding, um, at the bottom of where Linden and Walker, uh, met, where they intersected, um, enough so that it looked like a pond at the bottom of our street. And there were times where we were trapped in our houses for a few hours until the water would dissipate when there was heavy, um, when there was heavy rains. Um, I will say that after, um, after curbing, after there was, um, a lot of effort put in with curb and gutter, I don't think the flooding has been as significant. It used to be quite regular, it's not as much anymore. I think in the last couple of years, there's been one time where you, we couldn't drive down to, to the bottom of Linden, it would, it looked like a pond down there. Um, I did want, and, and so all of this is, is good information for me to, to hear. Um, I was always told the pond belonged to the homeowners association, and those people who did not live in Williamsburg Estates were not, um, you know, were not allowed to use the pond or, um, those types of things. So I did know the pond belonged to them. I did wanna just compliment, uh, Mr. Keys and the homeowners association because starting about last October, I guess it was, they started cleaning up around the pond significantly. Um, and just in the last week or two, it, it looks, it just looks amazing around there. You don't, there, they got rid of a lot of trees and a lot of brush, um, that, uh, the walking bridge there for a while had kind of been, um, it, it, it had been out of commission, I believe, and they've really fixed it up around the pond. So I know they're putting a lot of, um, time and energy into the pond. And Mr. Keys, I just wanted to say, from, from a visual standpoint, um, you all have it looking really nice, uh, around that area for your homeowners. And that's really all I had to offer at this point.
Well, thank you very much, and when we get the grass in there in a couple of weeks, it's gonna look even better, but, uh, but thank you very much.
So, but the, the, my question is this, then, talking, what Mr. Napier was talking about and what I've read online, if water flow is flowing from point A to point B, if you go back to those two big pipes on the corner of Linden, that water is flowing, when that water comes off that lake, it's coming out of those pipes. So I'm constantly picking up trash, I'm constantly going through there, so if we can't, to, to hold responsibility, then if y'all guys aren't gonna do anything, y'all can at least put a grade over those holes to where water comes through, but trash doesn't, because I have to pick that trash up when it comes through there. So, and even when it crossed the street, there were branches, when that water overflowed from the pipe across the street where that Big Ten was, when the water can't get through those pipes, it comes over the street, so does the sticks. So I had to get out of my car and move sticks. So what, speaking with the lady, since we are cleaning up the lake, I don't know what the pass board went through, I don't know the battle that they had with the town with the flooding, just, it kinda got ignored. It got ignored from the HOA, it got ignored from the town council, for, for anybody that has anything to do with this water flow. So we do want it fixed. So that water is coming from those two pipes, and from the, it's coming from the, it's coming from that drainage pipe. It may be coming from a water flow, but it's hitting those pipes, dropping from y'all's point A onto our point B.
Who installed those pipes? Did the town install that?
I'm sorry?
Did the town install those pipes?
Yes, they did, I would assume.
The town?
The town would have, I would assume. I, I don't know.
I heard an annexation problem.
You can go back to the pipes and look, I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't know who would have installed them, but.
Yeah, I mean, those pipes hadn't been put in when the roads were put in.
But y'all guys worked there cleaning them out the other day, so I'm assuming it was the town. Y'all were spraying them out, so, I don't know.
Yeah, and it's like I said earlier, the biggest thing right now is get that ditch cleaned out.
So the only thing, HOA, the only thing that, uh, uh, homeowners pay for is, uh, to maintain a property around the pond?
Correct. I say that, I'm assuming that was a natural creek for years, and whoever, whether it was Chris Ramsey or whoever, decided to put a pond in there for cattle, I guess, uh, that was fine. Then all this water is being diverted in there from houses and everywhere else, and it, it just simply can't handle it. That, like I said, is that, that, uh, creek or ditch, in the thirty years I've been there, has filled up from about four feet deep to about six inches. So you can figure every ten years, it's putting up about a foot of silt and stuff in there. If we get that cleaned out, that will go a long way to eliminate any flooding, at least from Linden Street onto our property. Uh, now, what happens upstream?
The, in, in Michigan, members of council.
Mr. Keys?
Yeah.
Is there?
Yes.
Do you have control over the pond level? Is there a relief valve or something that you can open to relieve the flooding upstream? Which?
There is no relief valve in there. Um, last year, we, the former president spent twenty-eight hundred dollars to put a new and larger drain pipe in there. And to be honest with you, they put it in a little higher than it should have been. Uh, this past spring, we had a lot of high water, and there were some pictures in this art, in this bunch of pictures here that shows the water line on a fence back there at the back of the lake. It's, water actually was going through the pipe, but the water actually got up and went into two houses backyard, and one of them had a pool there, and it wasn't that far from the pool. So.
Well, I have seen downstream, and I've heard residents that I've talked to, talked about the town riprapping their, their banks. And so.
And so the water flow from the lake coming, the excess water coming off the mountain affects all of this. And then your lake, as homeowners, affect downstream. So, I mean, it's a major issue above and below. Is what I, you know, I've personally seen. Yeah, I mean, that, that, that lake serves like a, a holding pond, if you will. It, it takes water in and it holds it up to a certain point and then it beats it out through the other end. The real issue is that there's been so much silt in, excuse me, in the ditch and the lake that we need to lower the drainage and get that ditch cleaned out so that it will hold more, more, more water. And you won't get this sudden tidal wave coming through there.
So, so members of council, I mean, I think you have a good understanding of the situation and, and I, you know, I have a lot of empathy for the homeowners association and the situation. Um, as town manager, I'm kinda caught between a rock and a hard place here. Um, I see the situation. Um, you know, when I just, I just, I have, I have the perspective based upon the advice I've been given and based upon letters from the past. I have the perspective that the, the ditch is the homeowners association's responsibility due to the fact of the amount of water that's coming upstream, um, from the mountain, et cetera. And without a doubt, and I don't wanna mislead anyone, uh, the town does, the town roads do add to the water in that ditch. Um, and if there's, you know, if, if there's a way for, you know, if there's a way for public works to do some work in that ditch, um, in an effort to assist the homeowners association and what they're planning to do in that ditch. And if it's, uh, I, I'm concerned about if we, if we, we have this situation in many other areas in the town uh, as it relates to, um, natural water getting into, um, you know, people's, you know, people's property. And I just wanna make sure from a legal perspective, we don't open ourselves up and all of a sudden now we're responsible for a lot more issues. That's, that's my only concern. And we can talk about this some more. Tonight's purp, tonight's purpose was to bring this to your attention. Um.
Mr. Teeger?
Yes, sir.
Um, yeah, I, I lived up there also 55 for a lot of years. And, uh, the, the mayor's right, um, the biggest part of that water comes off from the zoological park. Um, every time we got a real hard rain, I guess like Mr. Keys is, is, is talking about, um, I would have to pump my crawl space out because if I did not, the water would come up into my living room. So, um, and, and it is a fact. Um, what, what, what is we as a town, the council can do about water that's coming off of a mountain? Not a whole lot. Um, so my question is on this, um, is, is Matt, I don't know, um, if, if we could get a worksheet and see what it would cost possibly. For one, to see if we could get a crew up there and just, um, I, I'm not talking about digging the whole trench out. Um, I, I'm not talking that, but maybe cleaning out from around the front of the culverts.
Right.
And pulling that stuff back and, and maybe get back to council and let us know, um, what the cost would be for that. Uh, you know, I don't know if it would take two men, three men and, and how, how long it would take.
Yeah, not, not, not significant. We, we have, we have some estimates that we can provide you pretty quickly.
Yeah. Um.
I'm, 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 I'm kinda with Gary on that one too. I didn't know if there's something we can do, a little bit of remediation there. I think that might be helpful. Um, you know, while we're trying to figure out, um, you know, the liability uh, of where the, the water is coming in and yeah, I, I, I hear you, Matt, on being stuck between a rock and a hard place. But again, if there's a little bit that we can do to help it, uh, at least for the interim, I think that'd be, uh, a good gesture.
Matt?
Yes, sir.
Uh, going back to what you just said about maintenance, uh, you know, you know, if Robbie Good can go out there and open up any of those pipes that are partially blocked and all that, that is a maintenance that we normally would take care of anyway. And if we go on private property and do property or clean these ditches that's on private property, we're not do, not supposed to be doing that. And I ask where I have the problem is, is the fact that if that ditch there going to the pond is on private property. Before we do anything there, if we do anything, we've got to have some type of easements. Get in there and do some work because if we don't, then we're in violation of our own ordinances. So I think we need to look at this thing a little bit deeper and look at the situation and see what we're liable for. And then consider anything else that may come out as far as the cost back to the town or the HOA.
Mr. Mayor, I, uh, I, I wasn't talking about, uh, taking our equipment over on, you know, actually the Williamsburg Estates property and, and digging out their, their ditches. Uh, what I was talking about is off of the, uh, road there off of Linden, Linden where those two storm pipes are, that they, they do look like they, they could stand a little bit of pulling back on the fronts and the backs of them. Um, I have, I have the same concern you do. I, I do not wanna get in one of these things where, where if we go in and, and do this, you know, it, it's private property. And, um, and I do not wanna be liable, uh, or the town to be liable. Um, if, if anything, you know, would, would happen to somebody's, uh, property, um, going forward on this. So, um, that, that was, that was where I was coming from, Mr. Mayor.
Um, Mr. Uh, Matt, could we just go ahead?
Yes, sir.
And send a maintenance crew out there, look at the end of the pipe, make sure all the pipes are flowing properly. Uh, and stay off of private property until such time we resolve the issue, whether it, that ditch that goes from the last pipe down to the lake, that property, I'm pretty sure is not ours. That is on private property there. So to me, if we can just get that, those pipes, at least we're doing something to clean the pipes out if that's an issue. Going back to the screening, uh, you can't put screens on the inlet or an outlet of a pipe cause that builds up more trash and more debris, so they catches that. So you can't do that. So the pipes have to stay completely open.
Mr. Mr. Mayor? Sir, sir, excuse me, excuse me. On that last comp, on that last comment about it backing up by putting a screen over the pipe, so what you're saying is, is you're gonna allow it to dump onto our property?
Well, you can't put a screen because it'll all black up the pipe.
And you can't dump trash onto our property. But on a second note, talking about digging.
No, hang on a second, hang on a second, hang on a second. He's. Mayor?
Yeah, the problem is, uh, you know, I've, I've been there, I was public works director 25 years and I've gone through this process numerous times. But you cannot put a screen over piping, cause every little rock, every little bit of soil that goes through there or limbs will catch on that and then everything stopped up from that point back. So, you know, putting a screen on there is not gonna happen because that's just not a, that's not even considerable in my opinion. Because that's just gonna create more problem for the people upstream, uh, or downstream from where you guys are at.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to, I, I wanted to bring this to your attention. Uh, we, we've been discussing this for a while. I, I think it's important. I, I will go back up, um, with, with, uh, Doug Napier. I'll, I'll get back up there with Robbie Boyer. And, you know, like I, like I said, I, I understand the situation and I, I, you know, I wanna find a way for the town of Front Royal to be good neighbors as it relates to this private property issue. So if, with your permission, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll go up and at, at a minimum, we'll, we'll clean out those intake and, 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 um, those, those, those pipes with, at a minimum. But I also wanted to see if there's anything, anything from another, another perspective we might be able to handle.
Hey, Mr. Teeger?
Uh, Matt?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to add that, uh, there are, um, not so much as a screen because a, a screen will definitely clog up, but there are a, a couple manufacturers now, uh, they put filters on the ends of these storm lines that, that come into streams that will catch trash without stopping up. Now, you know, it does take somebody to come and get all the trash out. But a, again, I'm, I'm not real familiar is what the cost is on those, but they do make them now. I just wanted to add that, sorry.
Uh, Matt?
Okay.
Uh, when you do that, can you get with Bill and myself and we'd like to go with you, I'm sure. I know I would. And I know Bill and I have been out there already a couple of times and I think we would like to look at all the situations as well.
Yes, sir, sure will.
Hey, Mr. Teeger?
Yes?
Hey, can I say a couple of things? That's why we're on it before you switch topics?
Sure.
Uh, and just one thing kinda what Mr. Tewell was on, but they have a footbridge there that's right down from that that we've said something to them several times about. All that debris is catching in that bottom, that little footbridge and it's, it's shoving all the water out. Uh, um, and then he was talking about the new drainage pipe being above grade. It looks like it's a foot, a foot and a half at least above grade, that the pond has to get up above normal, uh, to drain out. I just wanted to bring those two things up.
Well, Robbie, if that's the case, then that's backing the water back up further. What happens easily done, if that's the case, that pipe needs to be cut down to where, where it should drain properly, properly at the same elevation of the inlet of the, of the actual pond.
Exactly.
Above that, it's gonna back water all the way back up the street.
Yeah, it, it looks like it's a good bit above grade, yes, sir.
Well, I think that ought to be a situation we need, somebody needs to look at that as well. That's what's put in there wrong.
Mr. T-
I, I have, yes. Yes, ma'am?
Mr. Tetrick or whomever, I'm not sure how I'm addressing here, but I would also like to, um, I would also like to meet with you and, and Mayor Tewall and, uh, Vice Mayor Seelak. When you go there mainly so close to me, I'd be interested. I just wanted to also mention too, that while I am very empathetic to the homeowners around that area in my neighborhood, I just wanted to say that, um, this particular area is not the only area that's been affected by that water runoff, um, over on Markham. Um, there are some yards there that when the water, as somebody mentioned, when that new subdivision was built and all that water started to be diverted into our neighborhood, um, there, there are yards in, on Markham that had a trickle that was going through it to something lighter than the ditch that you're seeing in those pictures. So I do think that we have to be cautious when, um, we're discussing this because there are probably, um, many homeowners that, that have, that are also affected by this water runoff. Even the people on Linden Street, um, the ones that are up, there's stuff that cut through the back of their yard that then flows into that. So there's a lot of issues there. Um, and I just wanted us all to be aware of that. It's not just, um, the homes that are right by the pond that have been affected by the water runoff.
Matt, if you can get the maintenance crew out there and take a look at that, go ahead and do that because we can talk about this a long time. We need to look at it, try to do what we can meantime, in the meantime with our maintenance crews. And then, and later we can decide on if there's something we can do a little bit more substantially. Is that all right with the council?
Thank you, sure.
Yes.
That'd be fine. And just for the, uh, Mr. Mayor and, and the press, um, Miss Athee, I will absolutely get you out there, but it won't be with, uh, two other council members for FOIA unless I bring the press. So I'll, I'll make sure we get, we'll get you out there, Lori. Thank you.
The next item tonight on our agenda is item two, review of the comprehensive water and wastewater utility costs, service fees, a great study. Uh, Matt, can you take care of that?
I can, if you give me one moment. I'm gonna give the, uh, screen back to Todd. And Stantec, are you on the line?
Matt, hang on a second. I've gotta promote them. Give me just a moment, please. Uh, there's Mr. Hyder. Need your microphone, Mr. Hyder? And.
Good evening.
Mr. Burnham, you're there? And Ms. Barnes, he should be there as well, if you can check in on your microphones, please.
Hello?
Hello, Todd. Hi, Todd, this is Andy Burnham.
All right.
And Todd, you can give Andy the, uh, controls so he can show the.
Andy wants controls or David?
I do, David, if you could.
I'm sorry, my apology.
No problem.
And there you go, David, it should be all set, sir.
Okay. Can you get this set up? Okay, one second. Okay. Hopefully you can see my screen.
Yep, we can see it.
All right, perfect. Well, if we're ready to get started, I'm gonna hand it over to Andy Burnham. He's gonna kick off the beginning of the presentation and then, um, I will jump in about halfway through. Very good. Sounds good. Well, Dave, if you wanna kinda take us to the next slide, I can give an overview of what we're gonna talk about today. So, um, mayor and, and council members, uh, my name's Andy Burnham. I'm Vice President of Financial Management Consulting at Stantec. I served as the principal in charge for the project, um, Dave Hyder, who's also on the phone, uh, is our project director. And Ms. Isla Barnes, um, who's also on the phone, is our project manager. So I'm gonna cover, um, some of the introductory information about Stantec, uh, some background about the rate setting process. Just make sure we're on the same page about the use of some terms, um, as we go through the conversation tonight. Outline some key assumptions and then talk about the financial forecasting results or revenue sufficiency analysis. Then I like to turn it over to Dave to, um, talk through the system development charge analysis that we did. Talk about a cost differential study and then answer questions in Isla will, um, because her knowledge of all the details, she'll make sure to keep David and I on the straight and narrow. Um, just a little bit about Stantec Financial Consulting Services. Um, we really specialize in this type of work. Wanna go to the next slide, Dave? So we're about 300 communities, um, throughout not only the Commonwealth, but across the country. In specifically, uh, utility, financial management related matters, cost of service studies, financial planning and rate studies. I could have been, um, had the opportunity to work with the town, um, personally dating back to about 2009, um, on and off over the years and I'll, we'll talk more about that in a little bit. Um, but we generally do about 150 rate studies per year on average. Um, we've got almost 40 now specialists throughout the country. So we're able to bring knowledge and expertise of best practices across the country to, uh, each community to take that into account with their local circumstances and objectives to make sure we're, we're really helping communities do the best they can to, to balance, um, cost of service and affordability by keeping rates as low as possible, as long as possible, while maintaining their system in proper working condition. Relative to, um, the town's background and in this particular study, if you have the next slide, Dave, we have, uh, prepared, kinda broken this down into three discrete work elements. Um, the first is what I termed a revenue sufficiency analysis to do a multi-year forecast of um, cash flows for the water fund as well as for the sewer fund. Um, to evaluate the adequacy of the revenue provided by your current rates and to determine what level of future rate increases may be required uh, to sustain the identified operating and capital cost requirements for your systems while making sure we hit some of our key performance indicators relative to, um, sufficient reserve levels and debt coverage ratios to make sure that we have sustainable systems. Last time the town did a, a similar exercise like this externally, outside of its budget process, uh, we did that in about 2014 or 2015. Um, some of you may remember, uh, 2015 was actually the last year of any rate increases on the system. And actually in 2016, you did a reduction on your sewer rates. You've not had any rate adjustments since that time. So over the past four years, um, the water and sewer rates have, have been steady. The, uh, the second work element is looking at your water and sewer system development charges. And I'll go through the terminology here in a minute, but these are capital charges for some of your backbone infrastructure. Um, it's been a little bit longer time period since those were looked at. I think those date back to some of the initial work we did with the town about 10 plus years ago. Um, so there's a, a little bit more moving parts and potential changes here that, that Dave will go through today. And the last piece of, of the work elements for this year's study was looking at, um, how you allocate costs between in-town and out-of-town customers um, to determine the appropriate level of rate differentials or surcharges uh, for those outside of town based upon the, um, the different level of cost to serve, um, those customers sitting outside of the town. Uh, so as I mentioned on slide five, we have some just terminology here as, as we go through the conversation tonight. I, I wanted us to kinda have some, some definitions in mind about what, what these different terms mean to us. And, and hopefully, uh, they're terms that, um, that you can adopt too as, as you think about these types of fees. System development charges, as I, as I mentioned, are, are really intended to cover the proportional share of your backbone infrastructure costs, uh, from new growth and development. So the amount of capacity needed to serve new customers from a treatment perspective, from your treatment plants, your backbone trunk lines, um, your major pump stations, um, these are the types of costs that we wanna try to cover from new customers new customers to ensure that they're paying their fair share of the infrastructure that's been built to provide that capacity. You also have things that are called connection fees. And these are also one-time fees that are really intended to recover the cost of specifically connecting properties to your water and sewer infrastructure. So tapping the lines on either the, the far side or the long side of the road or the short side, making the actual connection to um, the, the property owner's service laterals um, that ultimately result in their connection to the system. And then we also have rates, um, these are your monthly charges and usage rates that are based upon um, your customer types, um, your, your meter size and, and how much customer water you use per month. And this is really intended to recover your ongoing costs, whether it's for operations, maintenance, um, outstanding debt that you may have taken to pay for some of your infrastructure and your ongoing renewal and replacement costs for that infrastructure. So just with this as a bit of a background, I wanna focus on the rate part of the conversation first. Um, in terms of how we measured the adequacy of your rates to fund those types of costs. And it's important to understand some of the key parameters within which we did that evaluation. So we wanted to make sure that both the water and sewer enterprise funds maintained a minimum of nine months of operations and maintenance reserves um, as a minimum target for a number of purposes. This reserve allows us to withstand um, changes in um, weather usage and potential um, potentially provides us a source of funds to stabilize rates during abnormal weather conditions. Our system emergencies, um, provides liquidity for operations. It also provides a, a bit of emergency reserve for unplanned capital expenses. General industry practice on utility reserves is anywhere between about six and twelve months typically. Um, the rating agencies provide a very good guidance and recommendations for about the level of reserves utility system should have. And this doesn't quite get their very top marks, um, but it does get um, uh, reasonable and good scores from the credit rating agencies. Um, which is important to uh, them as well as any investors that um, would be in the, the market to potentially loan you money for um, capital needs. In addition, we've made sure we've had a, a good ratio of our net income, which is our annual revenues minus operating expenses. That net income to debt, we wanna make sure it exceeds our debt by a factor of one point five times. That again is in keeping with our minimum requirements, but it's a little bit above that. So that if things don't occur exactly as planned, we have a little bit of buffer. Um, so that we can still make sure we meet the minimum requirements of our bonds. And similarly, this is at a level that would receive a good um, evaluation from the municipal rating agencies. So those are kind of inherent planning assumptions in the, the forecasts um, that we developed for the water and sewer funds. We've also factored in uh, some near-term big projects, um, water line upgrades um, that are associated with the, the paving project um, that's going on, about two point eight million for those. And then we've also included one point six million in twenty twenty-one to fast-track some inflow and infiltration abatement um, funding. But overall, the ten-year time period that we do these forecasts, we've got about um, nineteen million dollars of capital for water and pretty similar number for sewer, about eighteen million dollars over that time period that we're funding. And the way that we evaluate the adequacy of your rates and develop these financial plans is uh, through our financial analysis and management system model. And, and this is a, a screen capture of the control panel, that model. That shows over a ten-year time period at the top, the level of uh, water rate increases that are identified. What our um, all-in debt service coverage ratio or um, DSC uh, is each year. We wanna make sure we're above that one point five and we are. And then the graphs are really where the um, eyes are naturally drawn and it gives us a, a good visual summary of some of our key indicators. So the top left graph for the operating fund, the blue bars represent our end-of-year cash balances. And we want those to exceed that black line, which is that nine-month target that I mentioned, that minimum target. We wanna make sure we keep at least that amount of cash on hand um, so that we can deal with um, a lot of those risk factors that I've mentioned. The top center graph really shows us our cash flow, um, are the checks that we're um, cashing uh, coming in, um, exceeding or are they less than the, the checks that we're writing? And so for a long-term system, we wanna make sure that we've got those two, two lines very close together in the long-term with, with cash in ideally maybe just a tiny bit above cash out um, to give us a, a little bit of a buffer for emergency conditions. At the bottom left, the, the two charts at the bottom left show capital spending and how we're paying for that capital. And you can see for the water system, we're funding everything with cash resources. And so the bottom right chart is really empty. We're not showing any additional borrowing for the water fund. We're showing a pay-as-you-go program for um, the capital needs, which generally represent renewal and replacement for the system. Um, we look at a lot of scenarios through this process, um, not only independently but also with town staff. And always wanna look at scenarios of, you know, no rate adjustments for as, as long as, as possible. Or in this case, if we don't do any adjustments for the system by twenty-three, we start falling below the reserve target. So rather quickly, and then we start, um, actually reserves will go negative by twenty twenty-nine. So we, we try to make sure that we have long-term sustainability in mind as part of the process so that we can um, operate with, with modest rate adjustments for as long as possible or even potentially no adjustments feasible. But in this case, based upon those assumptions and parameters that I outlined, a two percent plan of increases um, for the water system would keep pace with our identified expenditures. Keep our reserves above our minimum targets. So we have a very solid, stable plan for the water fund, which again hasn't had any increases since twenty fifteen was, was the last time. And then for the um, the sewer system, we have a, a very similar screen capture. Um, this one, you'll note that on the all-in debt service coverage line, that second row, you'll see some uh, kind of yellow indicators. Um, they're, they're a little bit of a warning indicator that we're not quite hitting our debt service coverage target, that one point five. Um, this plan of increases that we identified at three point five percent uh, would gradually get us to the one point five debt coverage ratio. It gets there in twenty-one and twenty-two, but um, you know, would ultimately dip a little bit in twenty-three as we have the debt service uh, coming in for the INI abatement program. Um, in twenty uh, three is the full year that debt, debt payments would hit. And then we sustain that level of coverage going forward. We ran similar analyses of, of what happens to this fund if we didn't have any rate increases. Um, the reserves would uh, last a, a couple of years longer to twenty twenty-five, we'd start falling below our target. Then they would go negative by twenty twenty-nine and the more important thing is that debt coverage ratio. Uh, we would fail to meet our minimum target or minimum requirements of one point one starting in, in twenty twenty-five. Um, so for this system in particular, when we're issuing debt, um, showing a solid ratio of debt coverage will be important to make sure we're, we're getting that money in, in good terms. But outside of that, six point four million for the um, abatement program or the abatement project in twenty-two, we're cash funding everything else for the system and trying to make sure again that we have adequate reserves above our target and making sure that that top center graph of revenue and expenses, um, we're not um, deviating significantly from our cash in meeting or exceeding our cash out. So again, we're trying to, to maintain a, a balance and sustainable plan that avoids rate spikes um, for either of the two utilities. So when you kind of boil these things together on, on slide nine, it shows what this means or would mean for a typical residential customer um, with a three-quarter inch meter, using about five thousand five hundred gallons a month, which is kind of an, an average use that we saw from your billing data. I think others would, would use even less um, under the three thousand gallon minimum. But for water at the top, that two percent increase is about sixty uh, four cents on the monthly bill, depending upon the year and, and how the pennies round um, for the bill calculation. Um, and for sewer, it would be about a dollar seventy-nine increasing to about two oh five. So when you add those two things together, you can see the dollar change at the bottom of the screen. It's about two dollars and forty-three cents in twenty twenty-one, um, hovering around that, that two dollar and fifty cent mark for a couple of years and then exceeding it towards the end of our five-year forecast. Um, and with the total percentage change in the bill being just below two point nine percent. Um, for a little bit of um, background, when the last revenue sufficiency analysis was done in twenty fifteen, that resulted in the, the reduction in sewer rates in sixteen, holding water rates flat through twenty, as well as sewer rates after the reduction flat through twenty. Um, that, that study didn't project you would need increases until twenty twenty-one and they were at about the three percent level. So this is very much in line with expectations from prior studies of the system. And we're, we're generally on track and this is what we're identifying as what would help keep us sustainable and, and cover our operating capital expenses with reasonable contingencies factored into that. And that level of two point nine percent increase is very comparable to what others are doing across the country. So the blue line represents a portion of the Consumer Price Index specifically associated in tracking water and sewer um, costs across the country. And so the average annual increase in water and sewer across the coast of the country over the past ten years has ranged anywhere from about, I would say, three percent to about seven percent. It's on a little bit of a, a downward trend. Um, and that's generally always been higher than the overall Consumer Price Index, which factors in other things that aren't really as, as relevant to water and sewer costs such as food and healthcare and clothing costs. They're important to the consumer, but they're not relevant to how you have to operate a utility system and the things that you contend with, with regulatory requirements, changes in demand patterns, aging infrastructure, as well as operational inflation for, for your system. And so um, you're looking at less than a three percent per year plan, which is very good in comparison to what others across the country are looking at. And when you look a little bit more locally, Dave was trying to move me along. We did do a, a comparative bill survey uh, for some entities uh, to show for that typical bill at fifty-five hundred gallons. Um, how does Front Royal compare both now but then after the increase? All the other rates for the other agencies identified are their current rates. So um, we don't necessarily have knowledge about their plans for increases next year. So the proposed is maybe a, a tiny bit of an unfair comparison because it's, it would be your next year's rates against everyone else's rates today. Uh, but you can see even that notwithstanding, um, you're right in line with um, the cost of service for other communities um, for your typical residential user, a little bit below the average of uh, under eighty-five dollars for water and sewer service combined. Um, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Dave to talk about the system development charges and also the um, in-town versus out-of-town cost differential analysis that we did.
We got everybody still. Um, so yeah, we have a few more slides, just wanna talk about um, system development charges and connection fees now. And it's important, as Andy mentioned, that these are different than user rates and that these are one-time charges. So you only collect these once um, from your customers. And when we talk about a system development charge, what that essentially is, is it's that one-time charge that's designed to um, collect from new growth in the service area. Um, the cost that you've essentially um, incurred in building capacity to serve them. So the, the key concept there is that it's growth is paying for growth. So you've built the system and now people are joining, or you have to expand the system in the near future. And it's essentially that one-time charge to defray those backbone infrastructure costs. Um, so right now you do charge a, a system development charge and it's assessed uh, based upon a couple of factors. It's either the meter size serving the connection or it's based on the number of water client closets or the number of fixture units behind the, behind the meter. Um, and so in terms of our analysis, I'm gonna go into a little bit more details here in a minute, but we do have some recommendations. Um, the first is that we update your system development charges to reflect the current cost of constructing capacity. So make sure it's in current dollars. Uh, we're also recommending that we could simplify the way that the fees are assessed by just considering the meter size when we're looking at pricing capacity. Um, this is very, very common in the industry. By far the most common approach is just to simply use meter size. Um, and it would simplify things for you in terms of the administration of, of collecting these fees. And then in terms of connection fees, um, these are currently called tap fees on your system. But these are essentially when you actually make that physical connection. Um, so we recommend that these be based on the actual cost of actually connecting somebody to the system. The labor and materials that, that it costs to actually, to tie them in. So in terms of the system development charges, uh, the way that we develop these and calculate these is based upon the capital cost of, of constructing infrastructure. So we wanna look at capital items that generally have a useful life of, of longer than ten years. So we don't, we don't include things like computers and stuff like that within the, within the system development charges. It's that major infrastructure, supply, treatment, transmission, distribution. And we look at both the investments that you've made um, historically in the system as well as those investments that are in your CIP that allow you to maintain and provide that capacity to new customers. Uh, one item that we do address is that we do take out, uh, when we look at the system value, we take out the outstanding principal on debt. And the reason we do that is because we don't want people paying twice. Um, because when they join the system, they're essentially that, the debt service costs are included in user rates. And so it's very common and it's industry practice to net out that, that outstanding principal on debt. But ultimately, the goal is that we set these appropriately so that growth pays for growth. So what we've come up with in terms of the calculations, so this, this chart here is showing the system development charges per ERU or equivalent residential unit, which is your typical single-family connection, three-quarter inch meter. You can see your current fee for water right now is a little bit over forty-three hundred dollars. Based on our updated calculations, we're calculating a fee of twenty-six hundred and sixty-three dollars for water. For sewer, your current fee is almost ten thousand dollars at ninety-seven fifty. And again, based on our updated analysis and current cost, we're calculating a fee of seven thousand three hundred and thirty dollars. So you can see over to the right, when you add these together, because typically somebody's connecting, getting both a water and sewer connection, our calculated fee is about ten thousand dollars. So it's about four thousand dollars or thirty percent less than the um, than the current fee. So what these look like in terms of um, implementation for different meter sizes, as we mentioned, um, right now you do use both meter size as well as water closets and fixture counts. We're recommending just going to the center column here where we essentially um, use just the meter size. And these are just scaled based upon the hydraulic capacity of the meters. And so if you have a twelve-inch meter, you can draw a heck of a lot more water on the system than if you have a three-quarter inch meter. So these are representative of that potential capacity that you're essentially buying in the system. And so you'll note that, of course, because we're proposing, we're calculating a lower fee, it's gonna be lower for all the different meter sizes because it scales. Use the same scaling on the sewer side. And so you can see over here to the right, we have the um, calculations for the system development charges for sewer scaling by meter size. So we've done a similar comparison, um, surrounding jurisdictions, just to show you what other communities are charging for system development charges. Uh, you can see up at the top, this is where you currently are at about fourteen thousand dollars. Puts you towards that, the higher end of the range. Um, the calculated fees would bring you down towards the lower end of the range at that ten thousand dollars. Um, so we do see quite a wide range of, of system development charges within the state of Virginia. Our last topic is to talk about the inside-outside-town cost differential. Um, if you recall, right now, if you are located outside the town limits, you pay higher water and sewer rates. Um, because it costs more to, to provide you service. And so our analysis was basically to determine whether the current differential between in-town and out-of-town is appropriate. So in order to do that, we did use a, a generally accepted industry approach called the catch needs approach. So we essentially looked and identified those costs that you incur in providing service in-town and then looked at those costs that you incur in providing service out-town and looked at the differential between those two to see what the appropriate surcharge would be. Um, in order to allocate costs between in-town and out-of-town, we used a number of factors. Uh, for example, when we're looking at customer service costs, we looked at number of accounts located in, inside town, outside town. Um, for a number of factors, we use flows, water and sewer flows inside and outside. Um, when it came to capital such as debt or CIP, we looked at the specific uh, projects and where they're located and who they're specifically benefiting to allocate those costs. And then for some items, um, such as infiltration in the system, we looked at how many miles of pipe of sewer collection system are outside the city, um, outside the town versus inside the town. And so as it stands right now, you've got a, a current differential of a hundred percent. So a hundred percent on water and sewer rates when you're outside the town. Uh, based on our detailed analysis, we've determined um, surcharges for water um, that are a hundred and twenty-one point six percent um, outside town versus inside town. And then on the sewer side, we came up at about ninety-eight percent. So since the vast majority of customers have both water and sewer service, uh, when we do a weighted uh, combined average, we're at about a hundred and eight percent. Um, and so based on that result, our recommendation would be that you wouldn't change the differential, that it should stay at a hundred percent. I know it's a little bit higher right now, but need to remember that this is a snapshot in time. Uh, these allocations do fluctuate year over year, not drastically, but they will as costs change and as, you know, there's more flow in-town versus out-of-town and things of that sort. So we're, we're comfortable with the um, with coming in close to that hundred percent. And again, wouldn't recommend any change. And so finally, to wrap things up, just in terms of our recommendations, as Andy mentioned, uh, we are recommending annual water rate increases of two percent per year. Uh, sewer rate increases of three point five percent per year. And both of those will allow you to maintain a steady, um, steady state of maintaining the cash balance, submitting your coverage requirements and, and in most cases, cash funding the vast majority of your, your capital improvement plans. Um, that results in a bill increase, the typical customer of a little bit less than- That results in a bill increase, the typical customer of a little bit less than two dollars and fifty cents per month, or about three percent. As I spoke to, based on our calculations, we are recommending that you actually lower your system development charges from the fourteen thousand dollars combined for your for your typical three-quarter inch meter down to the the ten thousand. Believe that's the current cost of providing capacity. Within that framework, we would recommend that you do just base them solely in terms of assessments on meter size versus taking into account water closets and and fixture counts. In terms of the connection fees, they are not included. So those costs of actually providing that physical connection to the system is not included in the system development charge. So we're recommending that you charge those based on the actual labor and materials to make that connection. And then finally, as I mentioned, we're recommending that you maintain the current inside-outside cost differential. Believe that it's still appropriate as it stands right now. With that, we would be happy to take any questions and we can flip back to any of the slides if if there's anything you'd like to focus on.
This is Tash, I just wanted to thank you guys for coming out and doing this study and really good information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Not for me, thank you very much. Are we going to? I didn't see this, maybe I just missed it. Is this slide deck in our packets?
Yes, sir.
Sorry. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions on this tonight? If there's no questions on that, I guess we'll continue on with our meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and just wanted to give a shout out to StanTech. You guys did a phenomenal job. I also want to thank staff. They gave them a massive amount, volumes of information and data that allowed them to plug into their model. And you guys really did a good job and I just want to thank you for the amount of effort you put into it.
Well, thank you, Matt. We we really appreciate those comments and likewise the opportunity to to work with you and the staff. It's been fantastic over the years and we're happy to have the opportunity to continue to support you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, next next on the agenda, I'm going to turn it over to Finance Director BJ Wilson, who's going to talk about the sanitary sewer closed-circuit television CCTV for the INI abatement. BJ?
Uh, yes, thank you. So the the town did. Hello?
No, that's like people drop.
Okay, sorry. The town did put out a bid for sanitary sewer closed-circuit television CCTV investigation for our INI abatement program. This was done in conjunction with our engineer, CHA. They had recommended that we put it out with a couple of alternatives to get the best pricing for the town. This will go kind of hand-in-hand with our latest consent order for the INI that we'll be discussing here later on today, tonight. But bottom line is the the lowest responsive bid for the the two components that the town was looking for is nine-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars, nine-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars. This would be reimbursable if the town were to move forward with debt service on the INI program. We did this in conjunction with DEQ and the VRA debt service program there. So if we move forward with INI debt service, so we could get reimbursed for this. The great presentation that StanTech just provided to us did incorporate us cash funding this out of our reserves. And we would have adequate cash flows and reserve levels to meet the obligations if we do choose to fund this with our cash reserves. With that, I'll open it up to council for any questions.
BJ, is is all this in line with the Syntex presentation a few minutes ago? I know you said that.
Yes.
That take it out of fund balance, but is that going to create any issues as far as our our balance that we normally have? Or is it going to lower us to the point where we're not going to have that three months or the nine months as they're recommended in their study?
The it correct, it was, this was taken into account with StanTech's presentation. If you look on page eight of their presentation at the bottom, it shows that we would cash fund one-point-six million dollars of the INI abatement program. And that is part of that one-point-six million dollars is the nine-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand dollars. So yes, it has been incorporated and it will not, we will not fall below the recommended reserve balances nor cash flows.
BJ, does that take in in account the two percent and the three-and-a-half percent raise that we're anticipating in the water and sewer?
Yes, sir, it does indeed.
Okay, so that.
Yes, sir.
That will continue to, if we if we approve this study, then that'll continue for the next, I believe, five years, I believe, or maybe a little longer. Don't have in front of me right now. Is that correct?
Yes, that is indeed correct. The 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 revenues that StanTech had provided there was to cover the debt service ratio based on revenue bonds being obtained. And it funding this, we would still have adequate reserves and cash flows with those rates that they had recommended.
Well, did I see on the, did I see on the Syntex two-twelve to twenty-two that that's when we go into the bond market?
The it's the, well, that was the two thousand twenty-two is when we would have our first full debt service payment. We would go out onto the bond market in fiscal year twenty-one, but the full debt service payment wouldn't be until fiscal year twenty-two.
Okay, that's what I was seeing, a big highlight on the ticker page.
Yes, sir.
BJ, anybody else?
BJ, um, a question, when I looked at CHA's report on why they recommended hydrostructures, I didn't quite understand that they're saying utility services was lower, but the unit price qualifications. It left left a question in my mind, you know, it's a hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar differential.
The, yes, we do have a memo from CHA relating to that. The utility services did have a, they put qualifications in their bid. They didn't meet the, their bid didn't match our specifications. They were putting their own qualifications in there, which deemed them unresponsive.
Understood now, thank you.
BJ, am I seeing that we are are ten million, one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars above our three-month reserve right now?
Yes, that's based on the town's fiscal policies, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone? BJ, when when does this have to be approved?
We would have to hold a public hearing on this because it will require a budget amendment. We'd like to get this approved, hopefully within the next month or so, as long as council is okay moving forward with it to to a a public hearing.
Have we ever used this company before, do you know?
Not off the top of my head, I don't, I don't remember this name before, but their their references did check out. Our purchasing manager, Alyssa Scott, did check references and they all came back very good.
Great. Any other questions? Matt, it looks like I think we need to go ahead and set it up for a public hearing sometime in the future.
Yes, sir.
Is that all for that item, Matt?
Yes, sir, that's all for that item.
Okay, item four then is the orders to amend the to chapter twelve and one-seventy-five pertaining to the our fees that we charge.
Yeah, just a few, just a few minor items here. I'll turn it over to Mr. Wilson again, but we have some a few minor changes to recommend to you.
Yeah, so these these fees are something that we review each year during the budget process. And this year, upon review, we have a couple of recommendations here. One was a removal of the fifteen-dollar fee for the construction specifications. Our plan is just to put this document online. Changing the fee for disposal per tire for five dollars regardless of the size of the rim or if it's on a wheel. We had various different charges there and this just kind of makes it easier to convey. Then removal of the hundred-dollar fee for a hard copy of Town Code. Town Code is now online. If we do give someone a copy, it would just fall back on the foyer for being a per co- per-page copy for hard copies. So it's kind of redundant. Removal of the hundred-dollar Town Town Right-Away Vacation Fee Application. I believe that was on on recommendation of a member of council. And then removal of the ten-dollar fee for business license zoning clearance. All of these are minimal reductions in revenue for us, nothing major there. Again, I'll open it up to see if council has any questions regarding these.
BJ, if you look at the actual costs, how much savings would that be or how much loss would we pick up on changing these to these new figures?
The the overall, maybe a total of four or five thousand dollars total. It's not not detrimental.
Okay.
Probably cost three times that, Mr. Mayor, just administrative.
Yeah, I'm aware of that, yeah. That's usually what happens, we charge low fees, but it really costs three or four times that email.
Yeah, right.
Anyone else has anything to say on this, this evening?
Thank you, BJ, for going through and doing that. I think they're, I think they're good things for us to clean up and remove. They're just, not to mention the fact that it costs us administratively, but they're also little things that just really annoy people as they're either doing applications or applying for things or whatnot. So I appreciate you going through and cleaning that up.
Very good, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll go to item number five, envision Village Commons Report. Matt?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You may be, go back a few months. We started a process whereby we retain the services of a facilitator to assist the town and and various stakeholders as it relates to parking matters and downtown, as well as Main Street closures, et cetera. Many members of council attended the meetings at various times. I think most of the meetings were very productive. The first meeting was a little rocky, I think. I think everyone would agree to that, but I think we found our our stride eventually. The the facilitator provided a report, which is in your packet. I'm not going to go through in any great detail, but I did want to highlight a few things. One is that one key takeaway from the the process is that we needed to establish a criteria that had had the ability to be measured. I think that was an important takeaway and criteria. Another significant takeaway was that the the town, the town pays or town spends approximately twenty-one thousand dollars. That's what we spent twenty-nineteen in various services and overtime and and whatnot for various staff. And the group felt that having organizations pay a larger, larger amount of money, up to fifty percent, I think was the final recommendation. And in the report, there's a way to scale or to phase that in over a number of years should the town decide to go through and actually charge more for events than what we're currently charging. Let's see, closures, closures, they were fine with closures of twice, twice a month for Main Street, but they needed to be major events. And the criteria that was used was five thousand projected attendees or more. There also needed to be a budget presented, as well as an after-action on every event and then just some other other nuances throughout the the document that's in your packet. My 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 next step would be is to receive any additional feedback from council. And staff and I will go through the process and formalize the procedures and policies a little bit more. And then we present it to council for adoption. If if you so wish, or make make the appropriate modifications. But as far as I'm concerned, I would take, I would take the document that's been presented to you tonight and use that as the baseline for a more formal procedures and policies as it relates to parking in the Village Commons as well as closure of Main Street. Any questions?
Matt, would it be simpler, I mean, we take questions now, would it be simpler though to everybody to read this and look, review it and then maybe write down some remarks and give them to you in writing than it is to just to continue to discuss these things? I'm not sure.
That'd be a lot, that'd be a lot simpler for me. Yes, sir. That'd be great.
Well, I figured it would. I know you're going to critique all these things that that he he gave you on this report. So, you know, if that's okay with the council, I would appreciate if we do that instead of, you know, trying to hash this out this evening, tonight. Or maybe bring it back later as the, maybe this issue we're having today will change and we get back to our regular meetings. If that would be okay with the council, I would appreciate that.
I'm fine with that. Can we ask just a quick couple of questions?
Oh, sure.
Matt, the applicant fee proposal to, or it's not the applicant fee. I'm sorry, I'm flipping back and forth on my screens here from the PDF thing back to our to our meeting. But I think you called it the, well, whatever it is, the split fifty-fifty with the applicant.
Yeah, it's it's the application fee.
Okay, and that, you're talking about that split. You're talking about the spreadsheet that you had for the cost breakdown of twenty-nineteen events where it broke down the police, public works, energy service and total per event?
Ye- yes, sir, and that's.
Well, I'm mixing up a little bit, I guess. And that's what I'm trying to clarify.
No, you're correct. You're correct. So in essence, if you look at the first one, the first item there, they have a, the total cost for that event was approximately four thousand five fifty. So if if we adhered strictly to what was the out, the byproduct of the facilitation events, we would split that in half and we would charge an application fee of, you know, half that amount, twenty-seven fifty or thereabouts. I I I think it's, I think it's, I think that's something we, I really need to work on with staff to try to figure out what is the right methodology and formula. I mean, again, I made it very clear during the during the meetings, matter of fact, every meeting, that the purpose of the meetings was to provide input to the town government. But that but that we would ultimately reserve the ability to put in procedures that we felt are the most, you know, most appropriate for our community. And and I think for many years, charging fifty percent is going to significantly hurt some organizations. I don't believe that's the intent of anyone.
Okay, I'm glad to hear you say that because that's what I was worried about. You know, you can make an argument that through your taxes, you're already covering police, public works, energy services. Certainly, you got to have some sort of barrier to entry because you don't want everybody to be doing a parade that they decide to do and it costing five thousand dollars or four thousand dollars every single time. I would love to be able to figure out a way where, I mean, the town benefits, right? Everybody, all the business owners benefit, the community benefits. I think it's a win-win for some of these larger events. I think that the, I think trying to figure out how to strike a, strike a balance between multiple applications every month and closures to Main Main Street, but also not wanting to deter, you know, people who are trying to put together some amazing events that really builds the community in our town.
That's right. I completely concur.
Anyone else? Okay, Matt, I guess that you all sit down and critique this and bring it back to us and then we can re-re review it later if there's no one else.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Will do.
Our next item this evening would be item number six, BZA term expire May the first. Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. Mr. John Hensley's term has, will expire on May first. He has indicated, asked to be reconsidered for for the BZA. And we just needed to know that, you know, what council's pleasure, if you wanted to advertise or if you're willing to reappoint him. And the judge, just as a reminder, Warren County Circuit Court. Um, and the judge, just as a reminder, Warren County Circuit Court appoints members to the B Z A and, um, I assume that during this shutdown or that we have, I assume that won't happen until after, um, after courts are, are reconvened, but, but the point of tonight is, are you willing to accept, uh, Mr. Hensley to be reappointed? Or do you want to put it out to advertise and, and seek other applicants?
Well, due to the problems we are having, I'd like to see us just go ahead and put him back into another four years if it's, if that's my opinion anyway, anyway. What about anyone else?
I'm fine with that decision as well. If he's willing to, to, if he's willing to take another, um, term, I think we should, we should leave him on it.
I'm good with it.
So, I'm, I'm good with it, um, in theory, but in principle, should we advertise that that's open for, for applicants considering this is a four-year term? I mean, don't get me wrong, I'm, I know we don't have a lot of people clamoring for, for those positions and so we definitely want to keep good people in it, but should we at least advertise that to let others know that there, there is an opportunity if they're interested?
What's counsel, think of that?
It's appropriate.
Okay, anyone else, uh, wants to re-advertise it or we want to go ahead and give Matt the okay to get it to the court system?
I'm not throwing up a barrier, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with reappointing him, I'm, I'm, I was just simply asking that question.
I understand, Jake, and it would be for the circumstances, I would agree with you a hundred percent, but with all the problems we're having with, you know, even getting together and, and approval of all these things, I think we just go ahead and point him if everybody's okay with that and go ahead and file it to the, to court system and get it over with. If that's okay with the council?
I'm good either way.
Am I?
Sounds good.
Oh, excuse me, anyone else?
I have a direction, Mr. Mayor, I will, um, I'll proceed, I'll proceed with Mr. Hensley, I have your direction.
Okay, that'd be great. Next item tonight is D E Q consent order, uh, discussion. Matt?
Well, I wish I could say I saved the best for last, Mr. Mayor, but that may not be the case. Um, the, the town of Front Royal received a, um, consent order from, or has had a consent order from D E Q based upon violations, um, the, um, the amount came to, the fine came to thirty-eight thousand six fifteen. Um, we immediately started working with our engineers and with Mr. Boyer and trying to find a way to get D E Q to waive that fine due to the amount of I N I abatement that we plan to do in the future and other, other work that we're going to mitigate, um, issues that would cause us to be fined by D E Q. Um, I'm happy to report that we are on the, uh, one-yard line, um, that, uh, D E Q will allow the town of Front Royal to submit what's known as an S E P funding or, or S E P project. And, um, and I'll let Robbie explain the greater details of that, but the summary of it is, is that ninety percent of the civil fine, uh, could go directly towards a project, which means we would pay a fine of three thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars. And the, uh, balance of the fine would go towards, uh, restoring and stabilizing, uh, Happy Creek from Prospect Street to South Street. Uh, it's a, it's a project that I think we as a, as a community recognize the value and, um, you know, I think it's something that we can, you know, we know, we, we, look, we've been under consent order, I believe, since two thousand and nine, if I'm not mistaken. And, um, there is a silver lining and maybe Robbie, you could explain this, there is a silver lining to this that during this, uh, period, once we agree and come to terms, um, we cannot, we cannot be held liable for other violations. Robbie, is that accurate? Did you want to explain that?
Well, eh, any, any violations for stuff that's in the consent order? So like last time, bypasses and sanitary sewer overflows were in the, in the consent order, but T S S violations wasn't. So that's where we got the fine from. Um, this time that will be in there, um, so anything for bypasses at the wastewater plant, sanitary, sanitary sewer overflows on the, uh, the distribution system or any T S S violations at the plant, um, yeah, we would not be fined for. Um, and also, once it's in place, it would also protect us, uh, against any like citizen organizations like Friends of the Shandor River or anything like that that tried to come back and take legal action against us. Um, but you was also talking about, you know, the thirty-eight six fifteen. Um, I don't know if anybody knows or not, originally the fine was a hundred and four thousand dollars and D E Q was able to put some of those, uh, violations together, together and get it down to thirty-eight thousand to start with. Um, and then from there, let us use the ninety, or the ninety percent, so that way we'd only have to pay the state, uh, three thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars. Um, probably the big difference is now because the EPA, the consent orders are only good for three years. That means in twenty, uh, twenty twenty-three, they'll come back and look at all this again and see where we're at, just to give everybody a heads up as far as that goes.
Hey, Matt, did, did we, uh, select that project or did the D E Q recommend that?
Uh, no, sir, we, we selected the project, um, we, we selected it based upon input from our engineers and, and public works and trying to find a, a project that we felt, um, D E Q had, had accepted a similar project, I believe it was in Covington, Virginia. The engineer had, the engineer was successful in getting D E Q to accept that work. So when he mentioned that as an example, um, Robbie and I very quickly said, well, what if? And we explained the Happy Creek, um, uh, project and he said, that seems like it'd be a bullseye project that D E Q would allow us to spend that money on.
And, and they won't let you use that, that part on any sewer work. It has to be a Clean Water Act project or improvement. So even though it's for a sewer fine, you can't, you can't use it to improve sewer work.
Well, I tell you, what you're all did down at the H Street, I think looks great, so if it looks anything like that, I think it'll be a worthwhile project. At least we'll get some comfort out of it and not sending the thirty-five thousand or thirty-four seven back to the state as a fine. I think it's a good idea personally.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I agree, definitely.
The stuff we sent out to Seaton, if you go through it, it'll give you all the T S S violations. We did have a couple for E coli, but it'll give you all the past, uh, violations, the work that was done since oh-nine and then it'll give you the schedule coming up. Um, the only thing that doesn't have a scheduled date yet is the review at the wastewater plant with the T S S, trying to figure that out still.
Okay, but this will get us off the hook at this point for another three years, it looks like?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
And, and members of council, I, this afternoon at two-thirty, I received the, uh, the draft back, um, from, uh, D E Q as well as our engineers. So that is in, in the box account and, um, and so based upon what I'm hearing tonight, um, let's see, Robbie, I think we have to have council approval of this, don't we, in order to sign it?
Yes, sir, you would need it, yes, sir, to sign it, yes, sir.
Yeah, so I'll, you know, hearing no objections, I'll put it on the, uh, I'll put the draft, um, again, and with the summary sheet for the next, uh, regular meeting, um, next Monday. Hearing no objections.
I think that'd be great. Yeah, no, no objection.
Tidrick?
From me, Matt, um, I think, I think we lucked out, Matt, uh, one hundred percent on it and, uh, I think, uh, Happy Creek has, has needed some, some, some improvement there, um, because I think some of the spillways there, um, at the bridge, I mean, I, I think one of them is working now, uh, but it's got a lot of silt and stuff, um, and, and it's not a very, uh, good, good flow as far as the path underneath the bridge there, so, um, I think it's great. Um, I think we lucked out, dodged, um, dodged a bullet on this, um, so I'm all for it.
Mr. Tidrick?
Thank you, yes, sir.
Well, I'm a little bit confused, this project has been on our target list now for two years, which is fine with me, but I did have another question. Did you consider the, um, changes and procedures and processes that you have, uh, put in place at the waste treatment plant such as chemical usage and some of the other items, uh, we have discussed?
Ye- yes, sir, all that was discussed, um, and frankly, some of that may have been the reason, in addition to combining some issues, why the original fine went from a hundred and four thousand to thirty-eight thousand. Um, but, uh, D E Q and C H A, our engineers, Public Works, Wastewater Treatment Plant, um, they worked, uh, diligently trying to find a way to not only reduce the fine but to, well, reduce the fine to its lowest level and, and put it towards a, a viable project as opposed to just writing a check to D E Q. So, um, so the answer to your question is yes.
Okay, the second question being, um, I don't understand, we are going to go from South Street, uh, going north down to the bridge at, um, Main Street?
Prospect.
Do I understand that?
Prospect.
Prospect. Okay, that's better.
If I'm not mistaken, that's the wooden bridge, Robbie, is that correct?
Yes, sir, yep. They tried, they tried to find a section that was close to that fine amount. Well, we looked at South Street to Kreiser, but the, that cost was way, way more than what the fine amount was because they wanted us to try to keep it close to what the fine amount was for the project.
Well, my concern is the Main Street flooding that we've seen due to Happy Creek. Uh, if you don't take it wide South Street, why didn't you move it further north and take in Main Street and all down below those, uh, off of Main Street coming further north? Because that hadn't been touched in, uh, uh, Mr. Tewald, you might help me, I, at least, uh, ten years. That's the only concern, I, South Street has had, that section has had work on it, um.
Yeah, we, there's nothing, uh, and I guess, and Robbie, you jump in, but, uh, there's nothing preventing us from doing more, uh, of a project. So, um, um, C H A, our engineers, found a section that would qualify for the thirty, approximately thirty-five hundred dollars or thirty-five thousand dollars of labor and material. Um, so that's how that particular section was, was, was set up and it, it worked in such a way that it was easily identifiable for D E Q. In other words, Prospect Bridge to South Street. If we'd gone from Prospect Bridge to Main Street, it would have been, um, more money. Now, we could still, we could put that into the next year's budget or the following year.
And if I'm not mistaken, I believe there's some work that's going to be done in the area for, uh, I N I abatement as well, uh, which may, um, be a facilitator, which is why we're going with, with that section. Um, if there's some storm pipes that, uh, run in other places, we may be digging enough twice if, once we get the camera work done.
Well, yeah, there's a, there's a section there at, uh, the bridge, it'll have to be replaced as stainless steel at some point.
Well, that's kind of my question, Robbie. I, I know significant work was done from South Street down and it seems like it's kind of redundant to go back and, you know, do the same thing over when we haven't reached the lower level.
Well, now, we just cleaned out from underneath the bridge or by the D M V a couple of years ago. I'm not sure if that's the same bridge you're talking about or not.
Well, that's the same bridge I'm talking about.
Yeah, yeah, we just did it a few years ago, yes.
It was when I first got on council, we talked about that kind of being a, an annual event to save the, uh, spring flooding that we know usually comes.
Yeah, well, the, the big problem now is like where Mr. Tewald was talking down by the A Street Bridge, it, it's gotten to the point, it took us a year and a half to get the permit to do that work through the V M R C and the Army Corps Engineers, um.
Yeah, I understand all that, I remember all that.
Robbie?
Yes, sir.
Uh, are they going to allow us to do that on an emergency permit or we're going to have to go through all the hoops and hurdles?
The way they talked, as long as we had it filed, I think within a year with the V M R C and the Army Corps Engineers, we would be covered.
Good.
They, they would work with us, the, the way she talked, she totally understood how it's gotten with all that as well.
Okay, I understand and I understand, and, and Bill's right, there was a little work done up there when we did the trail, but really the riprap rock that we're talking about now is going to be huge rocks that's going to stabilize both sides of the creek bed down the prospect. And then, you know, later on, as, as Bill said, maybe we can look at that, but I don't think we're going to be able to do it in next year's budget. It's just too close right now, we, we don't know how much money we're going to have to start with, so we need to put that in, on a, in our basket and maybe pull it out at a later date.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Any other comments on that? Uh, Robbie, again, going back to this, uh, how much time do we have to get this project completed?
Uh, three years.
Okay, that's, that, well, we ought to be able to do that, I hope.
Oh, yeah, 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 we'll be.
Are you gonna, all gonna contract that or are you all planning on do it yourself?
We're gonna try to do it ourselves, all in-house, yes, sir.
Okay, okay, that's good, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Last item on our agenda tonight is open discussion, anything, anybody wants to talk about Seaton? Hearing none, I guess, Matt, that concludes our meeting tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just want to remind, um, members of council that we, and the public, that we do have a meeting, um, that's, that we're going to be sending out an agenda for Thursday evening, seven P M. And that meeting's going to be discussing, uh, this current year, um, budget, this current year, not budget, but our.
Well, yeah, current year budget, yeah.
Current year budget. Shortfall budget.
There you go, I didn't want to say that.
You need to say it like it is.
Yeah.
Okay, for that to be helpful, uh, this meeting's closed.